Thank you for being here. If you'll stand, we're going to be ready to work prayer by Commissioner Pearson. They remind standing for our place.
I've gotten a father in heaven with God in the presence of the Father of Jesus Christ. And we like to thank you for all the blessings that you provide for us each day. Our Father, we ask for special blessings at this time as we go through this stressful time in our nation. I pray that as we practice our respect, we grow closer to you and our faith becomes more dependent on you. I'm sorrowful, Father, and I pray that we all are that it takes something like this to increase our faith on you and ask for your forgiveness. I pray for all the leaders of the United States and Texas and Van Zandt County. And I pray for your guidance on each one of us as we make decisions. And I pray that you help us when we do right and I pray that you would think us when we do wrong. Thank you for all the blessings that we have through our dear Savior Jesus Christ. In his name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
I will order the regular meeting of Van Zandt County Commissioners' Court on Wednesday, July twenty seventh, twenty twenty, in nine hundred and two, A U. Announce a form established with all members of the court present. Discuss and consider dispensing of the rating of the minutes of the Commissioner's Court of Purple Sign for May thirteenth, twenty twenty.
So, got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions, corrections, or additions? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. You have the list of bills before you, Miss Hill. I think he is not present. He's still working on payroll. He's had to get payroll out. And there was a couple of her.
He wanted to note, on the LGS deal that's in your packet, we are not going to be paying the county parts portion. Susan does not have our images up and running, so we are deducting that twelve hundred and forty dollars from that deal. And they, Anna, went in later and had to add the credit card, which the total on it is one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. And she also added the fuel card for all of the patrol cars in the amount of five thousand seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty-eight cents. So you don't have a copy of those. You don't have those on your register, but we all presented them this morning for payment.
So is there a motion to approve the bills for payment as submitted, plus the addition of those that just mentioned, Sandy? So good, Pearson. Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business. Is there any general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements or anything?
Judge, I've got two things. One, our state mandated cybersecurity, we are doing very well. We are down to just four employees left. One hundred and sixty employees have completed the training. Just four left, and we have twelve business days left to knock that out. So, great job, just got to finish strong. And second, the fourth annual farmer's market that I have every June is scheduled for three weeks from now. And that event is more than just, you know, the exchange of fruits and vegetables. It's become kind of a social event. And I've had healthcare providers and just a lot of people. And there's a little too much close quarters and a lot of hands-on training that I think at this point it's wise that we regretfully not have that this year. We will still, through the summer, you know, bring in fruits and vegetables and such, but I really think it's wise that we not hold it this June and pick up and do better and better next year.
Okay.
John, difficult to touch on what you said. Has the supervisor or the elected official of all road employees been notified or made sure we're talking about that?
Just through the email that I sent out yesterday, I have not had a direct phone conversation or in-person conversation with that elected official, but I can do that if you so wish.
Well, if we don't get it, I mean, it's completely impossible, right?
Well, it's worse than that, Judge. It's state mandated, and if we either comply or we are not compliant, it's one or the other, whether people have access or not. Van Zandt County complies or does not comply.
Well, we comply. We turn it off to the people who don't.
No, because it's still required that those people who are accessing the system, not through their own personal email or personal log-on, if they're using a central database system or some kind of computer system, then we are not compliant.
Any other general business we need to be made aware of? Being none, any public comments? Motion. I want to sign up for public comments. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider approving all this report for fiscal year ended September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, from Phil Brown, Eel of L L P, Duell, Texas. You know, they're the ones that do our outside audit. We look forward to this report every year, kind of report, sorry. And John Manning will be joining us. Should be on with us right now. Can you hear us, John?
I can, Judge. How are you?
We're doing great. You may go ahead and present the report.
Okay. I'm not sure. Well, first of all, Judge and Commissioners, thank you for letting us be here today. I know that y'all have a big schedule, and I appreciate you giving us some time and allowing us to do this through Zoom. I fully anticipate that the next time that we present this report and meet with the Commissioners that we will be in person. That's what we're hoping for anyway. So, we appreciate you guys trying to let us and you guys stay healthy and yet still communicate the financial status of the county as of September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Now, Judge, do y'all have that in paper format or is it on your computers in PDF?
Well, I have it. I have my report. I was just asking them if they had it in their books, and they said no.
I emailed it to them. Everyone should have gotten it.
Yeah, the generator from the city. Yeah, but he's...
Yeah, you're right. I didn't have a copy, but I stopped it, passed out. I already got it this morning.
Yeah. Okay.
I've looked over.
Okay, I've got a copy here if you have any questions. You might go ahead and proceed, John.
Okay, I was just trying to figure out what the best way to refer to page numbers, but I'll just hit some of the highlights and give titles. But really, the main reason that we are of service to Van Zandt County is we actually audit the financial statements, and that's what our independent auditor report is. It's on pages one and two, and those are the paper page numbers, not the PDF page numbers. What we're able to offer here for the county is an unmodified opinion, which of the four types of opinions that we can offer as outside auditors, this is the highest level of assurance that we can offer. We're able to call it unmodified because there were not material things that the county is not keeping up with or that there were controlled deficiencies so great that we thought that there was a good chance that transactions that are recorded would not be recorded according to GAAP. So although only two pages, very important two pages when outside users of the financial statements are looking at Van Zandt County and how they're doing. If you look at page five, this is the Management's Discussion and Analysis section of the report, and this is essentially a narrative of what happened during the year. One thing that I like to go over here is if you'll look there, on page, actual page five, it's really the only place in the report anymore where we have comparative numbers. So you can see that the county had a very good year fiscally. Net position increased from twelve point eight million up to fourteen point five million. So that's very good. Had an increase in current and other assets, which is predominantly cash. You did have a decrease in your overall or outstanding debt, like your bonds and your notes payable of about a million dollars. However, your pension liability increased, and I'll go over that in a little bit more detail. But again, the county was able to add about one point seven billion dollars to net position there at the bottom of page five. So all in all, a very good year. If you look at page eight of the financial statements, one thing that I'd like to point out here is that from a risk standpoint for the county, we do not find that this balance sheet is extremely risky. If you look up at the top of page eight, you can see there that your cash and cash equivalents are almost eight point nine million. But what we're able to do there is to send confirmations and get outside verification that the amounts that you're showing on your bank reconciliations are proper. You also have a complete and detailed list of your capital assets, which is over ten million dollars, and the rest of that is receivables, which are predominantly your unpaid property taxes and unpaid fines and fees. So all of those, we were able to get either outside confirmation or very informative reports to make sure that those amounts are correct. Same with predominantly the bulk of your long-term debt. You know, we confirm with outside bondholders how much you guys still have outstanding for debt. And also accounts payable, we're able to test that very easily by looking at checks over a certain amount that were written after we were in and testing to see that those amounts were brought back into the proper fiscal year based on what was done. So again, although the numbers are very large, we are able to do some very easy audit steps to prove that those numbers are correct. Not a lot of difference here. If you're looking on page ten and eleven is your balance sheet for the major funds of the county, which are the general fund, all four road bridges, and your debt service fund. And again, all of those are looking a lot better than they were in the past. I know a few years ago, the fund balance in the general fund was extremely low, if not a deficit. Had some road bridge precincts with low fund balances, but as you can see now, those fund balances are a lot better positioned there on pages ten and eleven. All of them are positive, and all of them are in a financial situation where should something unexpected happen, you guys are now developing the reserves to be able to handle those things without any time something out of the ordinary happening, having to go borrow money. So that's a very good, very good improvement. So if you look on page thirteen, you can see that the general fund and all four road bridges were able to add to fund balance. The fund balance for the general fund is getting up to what prescribed balances are recommended to be, which is roughly three and a half months of expenditures. So you guys are starting to get right in line with what's recommended by G F O A and benchmarks for local governments. And again, you know, your road bridge fund balances are looking a lot better than they were in the past as well. So, you know, everything from a financial, I know y'all made some tough choices and had to make some difficult decisions, but you can see that those are adding to the stability of the county. And in light of where we're at today, I mean, the fact that I'm presenting from a remote location, you know, when something like this happens, having those reserves is very important to be able to make it through some of these difficult times. But if you look, as I mentioned earlier, if you look on page twenty-seven, you can see that there were about one point five million of reductions between your C of Os and your notes and leases with a few new leases of about five hundred and sixty-five thousand for this year. So essentially about a million dollar decrease in long-term debt, which I know for taxpayers and for people looking at the financials, keeping control of long-term debt is something that a lot of people like to keep their eyes on, and you guys have decreased that debt overall for the year. As I mentioned earlier, if you look on page thirty-four and thirty-five, if you'll recall, this is the fifth year that we've had to include what's called an unfunded pension liability, which is the county's pension program that's through T C D R S. And last year, the county actually had, y'all were overfunded, meaning you had more money in the plan than what they figured the liability was by about a hundred and sixty-six thousand. This year, that number has increased to a pension liability of about two point four million. And that's not anything that was in control of the county or major changes to the plan. What that was, was poor market performance in November and December of two thousand eighteen, which is when this liability was measured, back in December of two thousand eighteen. And so that's really predominantly why that number increased. The assets that you had housed with T M R or T C D R S decreased. So even with that, you know, that's a two point five billion dollar shift, and the county still has a positive net position. And that's very good, very good for the county to be in. Looking at page thirty-seven through thirty-nine, I'm sorry, through forty, is your budget actual for the general fund. And I know in the past, there were some revenue goals that were budgeted that weren't really able to be done, and this year, the county collected about three hundred and forty thousand more in revenue than budgeted and spent about eight hundred and four thousand dollars in less than what was budgeted. So both of those things were critical for an addition to fund balance for September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Right under there, too, are all of your road bridge funds that you can look at individually. Starting on page forty-six is all of the funds that don't meet the major criteria, some of your grant funds, some of your fee funds, some of the different small things are all grouped together and put into a non-major fund report there, and all of those look good as well. The last thing in the annual financial report is on page sixty-one and sixty-two. Because the county gets grant money and they do get money from property taxes, we also have to audit under government auditing standards, which makes us look at these items closer than if they were a private-held company. And we were able to report to the Commissioners that we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses to report. So all in all, a very, very good audit report. I know that at each of these meetings, you guys get interim financial information, and we just wanted to let you know that we predominantly work with the county auditor's office, and Miss Hill has everything and her staff have everything in extremely good working order. We send a list before we get started. She has almost all of those items in the portal before we ever start. And as you can see, you know, in the past, there were times when we presented this thing in July or later, and now we're actually here in May, which is a big improvement over the way things were in the past. This year was a little bit different in the sense that we had to do pretty much the entire audit remotely, but because of county staff making sure that we had everything we needed, we had regular status calls to make sure everybody was staying up on their end of where we were. County judge met with us a few times to look at the draft and to go over some of the progress reports that we had throughout the audit. And so everything looks extremely good, vast improvements over past several years. And if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to entertain those now, but thank you to everybody that we dealt with at the county. We thought it went very smooth, and like I said, we'll take your questions now.
Thank you, John. I thought the audit went very smooth. It was a remote audit. Sandy, the auditor's office, one of those girls did a great job to provide the information, what any information left out. They still got, they still looked at everything. A great audit. I think it's right on track. It's where we won't leave ours account. We have to, hats off to the Commissioner's Court for making decisions we have to make up here. I think you heard the good news. Does anyone have any questions, John? No questions? Okay, John, and I know we come through loud and clear through that, but thank you for what you did to the county. Thank you for the work you did. It's not just the county judge, it's every elected official within this county working together. I think you see that this Van Zandt County is now stable, but I promise you this, John, we won't let up.
Good. We like to hear that.
Thank you.
Hang in there with us for next year.
Yeah, that's right. You know, John, looking for next year, you know, what Austin has done, the three and a half percent property count, and then this virus, the current situation we're in, you know, we're already looking, the Commissioner's Court's looking at our situation for next year, and we're prepared for it. But we do appreciate Patello and everything you guys do for us.
Thank y'all very much.
Sandy, you have anything? Okay, thank you, John.
Thank y'all.
And you, John?
Who's John?
Okay. He is one, once we sign off on the, this budget report, once we approve this and we sign off on it, you will receive a hard copy. They're going to put them in the folders and stuff and present all that copies to each one of us. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner West. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider extending or modifying proclamation declaring a local state of disaster. I'll give it a note. One change is in over last night and other. You have, you have some declaration?
Yeah.
Okay. See, you'll... On this one here, it's, we've been doing it every two weeks. What I put on this one, I hereby declare a local state of disaster within Van Zandt County to continue until further notice, subject to the continuation or termination of the Commissioner's Court of Van Zandt County at any point in time. And this is going to go for a while, and we thought we'd rather break it every two weeks and go back through this. Let's just go ahead and put it, we can put it on the agenda at any time. But it just keeps us from having to break it back every two weeks. So we'll just bring that to your attention. And that's it. It's in force until week fifteen or ten. And I think it is the opinion of our emergency management coordinator that it does need to be extended. We're excited today and tonight, we do need to extend it. Vicky, you have anything?
No, but I think we need to extend it.
Okay. So I make a motion that we, my second, we modify it for that correction that, you know, what we just covered and extend it until we term. I'm going to make that motion. Got to say it by Commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We like to hear that.
Thank you.
Hang in there with us for next year.
Yeah, that's what, you know, John, looking for next year, you know, uh, the, with what Austin has done, the three and a half percent property count. And then this uh virus, the current situation we're in, you know, we're already looking at commissioner's courts, looking at our, our situation for next year. Uh, and we're prepared for it. And uh, but we do appreciate uh Patello and, and everything you, that you guys stood for us.
Thank y'all very much.
Sandy, you have anything? Okay, thank you, John.
Thank y'all.
And you, John?
Who's John?
Okay. He is going, once we sign off on the, the uh, this budget report, once we approve of this and we sign off on it, you will receive a hard copy. They're gonna put them in the buyers and stuff and present all that copies to each, each one of us. I think most of them have to record. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner West. Uh, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider extending or modifying proclamation declaring a local state a disaster. I would note, one change is in over last night and other. Uh, you have, you have some declaration.
Yeah.
Okay. See, you, you'll know. On this one here, it's, we've been doing it every two weeks. And what I put on this one, I hereby declare a local state of disaster when the event in county to continue until further notice, subject to the continuation or termination of the commissioner for Venzet County. At any point in time, and this is gonna go for a while. And we thought, we'd rather bring it every two weeks, go back through this. Let's just go ahead and put it, we can put it on the agenda at any time. And, but it just keeps us from having to bring it back every two weeks. So we'll just bring that to your attention. And that's it, that, that, that it will, it's in force until uh week fifteen or the, or time. And I think it is the opinion of our emergency manager coordinator that it does need to be extended. Okay, we're excited today, tonight, uh, we do need to extend it. Uh, Vicki, you have anything?
No, but I think we need to extend it.
Okay. So I'd make a motion if we, my second, we modify it for that correction that, you know, while we, you know, what we just covered and extend it until we term. But I might add motion, gotta, gotta say it by commissioner Brown. Any questions or discussion? Being done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider applying for the coronavirus aid relief. What this is, is uh federal money coming in and allocated. You've seen where ballots for big cities, it's over five hundred thousand. They, they just got their money automatically. It was just sent to them, uh, the, the ones of us, municipalities and the counties that support that can apply for. Uh, Venzet County, under this act, is entitled to two million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. If you apply for it, they automatically send you twenty percent. Just so that you sign up for it, they send the county twenty-five percent, which is, oh, twenty percent, I'm sorry, twenty percent. Which is four hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars. For qualifying purchases, it has to be purchases that qualify for the COVID-nineteen virus. Uh, I was, we have spoken, I've spoken with our auditor, Ms. Hill. We also had a phone conversation with John Manning, our outside auditor. And we believe that Venzet County should apply for this uh character. Uh, the glass, the, the plexiglass that Susan's putting in the clerk's office. Also think Karen, our, our district clerk, should put plexiglass in, in front of hers. You know, we're doing it in the tax and prison, I mean, tax and social collectors' office. Uh, that's expenses that I believe qualify for this, for this plan. I think this is an opportunity. What you don't spend and what's not qualified, you have to pay off by, you have to send it back. Well, we have the end of December, special reference, that's correct. Uh, any expenses from now or getting to the, all the, you know, some point now we go open courthouse, I go. And, and the reason it goes to December, we really don't know what expenses we may have until we now December. You know, you could have, you could have outright and have hired a professional cleaning company to come in. And so I would recommend that we apply for this and, and, and we get what we can get.
What is a badge on this?
There is no match, it's a hundred percent.
A hundred percent.
It's not like things was normal.
You can actually.
So they don't send us like forty, one hundred, two thousand, somewhere that, that good.
They're gonna send four hundred and forty-five thousand, nine hundred and seven dollars when we sign up.
When we sign up.
And we already have the grant, we have the funds set up downstairs.
We would recommend that everything that, that the YOCD person or the contact person be shaped. Auditor's office, you want to address that, Sandy?
Judge, what I'd like to see happen is, it, it is theme of money, so you have the who, what, when, where, why now? I mean, there, there are a lot, yes, twice. Uh, we normally, commissioner's secretary is normally the contact person, but uh due to the nature of it, uh, I would like for the court to appoint Shay Milton, my assistant auditor. When someone needs to make a purchase from the COVID-nineteen account, would that please send her an email? Because my office is gonna be the only uh office that will be available, that will have the, the authorization to approve a purchase order. Uh, because we have to know when something's bought, where it's used at. Like, uh, when we buy dispensers for the library, when I, when, which I'm not taking credit for this, Michelle's gonna take on a grant from my office as far as we're reporting. But when she reports that invoice to Tatum, she's gonna have to let him know, we took this to the lottery. We took this to the tax office. Uh, I would like to see any expenditure do a requisition on it. Whether it be ten dollars or five hundred dollars. I would like to requisition into the purchase order on all purchases so that we can ensure we know where it's going. Because Mr. West, you are very familiar with Tatum. If you don't have that information, they will deny it. So we, and we got on top of it from the beginning. Uh, we set the fund up, we've already been monitoring all the expenses coming out of that grant. And once we get our funds in, we will immediately start sending our expenditures in. Uh, it's uncharted territories, Michelle, uh, Michelle and I, we're gonna, it's gonna be a learning curve for us. Um, but we'll make the contacts needed to get that done and um.
The, any contact person, do you have any?
The extension office is supposed to be taking care of the carriers. Um, any questions or concerns? You're supposed to go through the Texas Land and Animal Protection Office. I don't believe Tommy and Melissa are here today, but um, they have, they made available to all of us, the court and myself, a webinar that we were able to use on the Carers Act. I don't know if you watched it or not, I did, uh, it was a very helpful webinar. But we, um, we're just gonna, we're gonna go back by day with it. And my other question was, Judge, have we notified the cities and municipalities that they have this money available for them? It doesn't hinge on the county applying, they can apply themselves. We don't, we have no, um, we have no tie to the city, but they do have funds available.
Every city, every municipality.
Yes.
And I assumed that the state was notified then, just like they notified us.
Like they notified us. I just wanna be sure they know. Uh, Susan has a Carers grant during the election uh that she can apply for. I mean, there's so many grants and funds available out there for help on this pandemic. And Susan has one if she'll apply for it, and uh, that will cover the issue, you know, all sanitation at the election sites. And if she needs whatever additional things she needs to ensure safety for the voters. Uh, but we gotta apply, you have to apply, then, then we have to manage. So, and it's all hinging on document, 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 and you have to start from the beginning. So I'll send out an email this afternoon uh with the court's permission and notify them that Shay is the contact if they need uh to purchase anything from the COVID-nineteen account. But I'm gonna make, if, if, with the court's okay, it's gonna be any purchase. We're not gonna have the one hundred dollar, one hundred and five. For us to be able to monitor and be able to document how much to be the purchase.
So, so do, do you see, if they apply, were they out of their own money?
Yeah, there's, there's a question here.
Depending on what, what they, by population or what.
It's fifty-five dollars for a cat. And it's, you have, you have under Venzet County, which I highlighted others, that you've got, can, if it would be approved by a grants plan, and if, and they have their own on my sphere. If they, they, they.
Now, I did send y'all an email and asked you to read the terms and conditions of the grant. I don't know if you did. Uh, there is a very stiff, there was like on page six of the terms and conditions of the Carers grant, it said that the sub recipient, which is Venzet County, agrees that a minimum of seventy-five percent of its allowance will be spending categories of medical expenses, public health expenses, and payroll expenses. So most of our expenses are falling under that public health expense because we don't have a hospital. We don't have a emergent, we don't have a fire department, a paid fire department. We don't have a paid annual service. But we got to be sure that, you know, our expenses are at least seventy-five percent in one of these categories. And I think we will. But I want you to be aware of that that is stated here. Because if we don't, then we could possibly have to have a fund back.
And that's it, and, 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 you know, we want to provide public, not just the public, but also, also part of the employees here. And uh, the lights, the plexiglass, and so, this public side. And I think it's a great opportunity uh that, that we apply for this. What, you know, there may be some expenses they reject and the county have, it was uh, but we are paying for everything we have, we've had from the very beginning uh of this allotment for COVID-nineteen. And the expenses we've already spent, we've spent, last time I did it, over six thousand dollars.
That's sixty-five hundred, I'll joke that. But we also, you know, y'all had a meeting on opening of the courts. And you may have to hire additional personnel for the, all the cleaning restrictions that are gonna be going. It's not just the district court, the county court. I mean, those restrictions are all falling into the J P court, so, you know, they're not. And we can, if you have to hire additional maintenance to clean those courts, we can take that out of this fund. But the fund runs from March first to December the thirty-first. And then, you know, it's, it's finished. So any additional employees that you might put on need to understand that their position are only going with this now. If, if you plan on funding them, there's a Care Act.
And there's a lot of changes, as, as she referred to, the, the, the district judges is a, has been passed with the responsibility to develop a plan for the courts here in the courthouse and also the justices of the east. That will, it will work within their home departments to however you wanna hold open court uh in person court when we do open up. It is uh between every year, you go in and disinfect and sanitize uh the room and everything. And so there's gonna be expenses, and I spoke to Joe about, you know, we, we have to hire somebody, you know, to, to clean it and stuff. We don't know what else expenses.
And it, it also states that it can only be expenses above your budget. I mean, if you already have it in your budget, you can't claim it. So it's any additional expense that the pandemic has caused your county. And, I mean, the funds are available, so we need to take advantage of it. So the taxpayers don't have to pay for any additional expenses because the state is gonna pay that for us.
You know, I can motion we go for this, and we apply this grant and we authorize the audit, audit to the public service.
Second, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown. Questions or discussion?
So Sandy, this money cannot be used to steal short calls and our government revenue.
No, it is very still on, nowhere new. In fact, John published that, uh, John Manning, when judging all this, did, did, they believe that the next stainless package that could possibly come out might address the recreational costs.
He said there's working on one, did that come out yet? But I thought there would be one coming out to address just exactly what you're talking about.
And, and you've got a line out and set up now, so uh we need to, to requisition, we cover.
Yes, that's, that's been, we've had that since the pandemic started.
And there are, there are lots of companies that have targeted up home cleaning services, disinfecting, uh, that you can hire now, just to come in and they'll disinfect something real quick and they're, they're gone.
They've got a price on it.
I do.
And I know one facility is like forty-something thousand dollars. And I think we've done very good, I think Venzet County has done an excellent job of keeping the expenses of this pandemic low and the, the cost of it and consequences of it. Uh, but I do think we have an opportunity here to, and then what we don't use, they're gonna send the money. If you don't, if you don't spend it, when it ends, if they don't extend it or whatever, then you send it back. It does have to be placed in an interest-bearing account. And that, if you haven't got clarification, you have to send them the interest. Uh, I have to send the money back when you used it.
I'm sure we did.
I'm sure we did. We had that.
I hope, but using their money, they're gonna want their interest. No, we have another, I have a quick question. My press is coming in on Friday, so I'll do a purchase order today.
Yes, please do.
Uh, just email Shay the information if you want to purchase.
You mentioned that interest is good, good, is there above what the, what this account's on the bank card? Or moving on?
No, there's not.
Any other questions or discussion? Motion is second, is there, is there all in favor of applying for the Carers Act, the coronavirus aid relief? Say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider order authorizing preparation of taking impact assessment for regulation of subdivisions, local home and rental communities, and schedule a date for public hearing. Uh, pardon me, what's addressed the court?
Judge, this is just an order setting out, uh, scheduling uh on the agenda, different settings for the public to go over our new rules, regulation, subdivision regulations, household and local home, subdivision regulations, taking impact assessment. Uh, and it sets out in this order, the first schedule would be May the twenty-seventh for the first reading. And then on May the thirty-first, the first publication notice for public hearing, at least thirty-eight prior to public hearing. And then on July the eighth, second reading, proposed regulation of subdivision land, including manufacturer homes, rental communities. And then uh on, uh, also on uh July the eighth, the public hearing, the actual public hearing on the subdivision regulations. And then also on the eighth, we'll consider and take possible action regarding proposed regulation of subdivision land, including manufacturer home, rental communities. So it, it's an order setting out the dates, uh, set up to better inform the public on what's going on. We're, we're gonna make sure all the local state agencies and also the surveyors, and any public member who wants to come, they will be notified by this order. And it will be, these uh setting will also be on the agenda too.
So when, where, when the party reading, or most ready?
I think that it's May the, the first, the first reading uh is uh today. And that, that's, that's what we're doing now. That's what we're reading out, see the schedule. The, the second, the second, second agenda will be on May the thirty-first. And that is the first publication of notice for public hearing, at least thirty days prior to the public hearing. And it is, it will be thirty days.
Okay, is that a form of a motion?
It is a form of a motion.
One second. Okay, got a motion, Commissioner Milton, second, Commissioner West, authorizing preparation of taking impact assessment for regulation of subdivisions, local home and rental communities, schedule a date for public hearing. Any questions or discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say one thing, uh, I appreciate all the commissioners that are here, but especially Tim, Commissioner West, and we've worked, we've worked really hard on this, uh, finalizing it. And uh, we got an attorney now to make sure everything's right, so.
Any other questions, discussion, call me in. Being done, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider adopting three ninety-three for the Texas Transportation Code, outdoor signs on public right of ways for enforcement in Venzet County.
Well, if you would, yes, sir, uh, Judge, Commissioners, uh, the code enforcement. Uh, the code enforcement officer, the fire marshal. Asked me to present an order so they can enforce this. And so I copied the chapter three ninety-three of the Texas Transportation Code. Signed the right way, public right way, in Fort Worth, in Vantec County. I copied all that and I put it in form, so by court order, we can approve this. And the, any enforcement officer can enforce this now because we have had problems with signs. And on our county roads, uh, and rideways. What happens is when we start mowing, which we're, we're doing right now, these county roads. Mowers at these signs and these wires that anchored up at moors. And it takes time to get out and unhook the wires and clean, clean the boards up. And also, uh, it chops the sign up, it litters the roadway and the right way. So this will give, uh, this is what the, our code enforcement officer. And our fire marshal requested that that we do to so that they can enforce, uh, this chapter three ninety-three of the Texas Transportation Code. So I make a motion that we. I make a motion that we adopt this chapter three ninety-three of the Texas Transportation Code, outdoor signs in public right way for enforcement of Vantec County.
Well, motion, is there a second? Second, a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Wes, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number twelve, discuss and consider changes or approval of TAC, H E P P renewal rates. Dan, you want to address the court on that?
Yes, there's issues. Health care continues to go up, as we all know, and we received our packet from TAC. They kind of gave us a rundown of where we stand versus, you know, other counties around taxes. Overall, it's remained basically at a zero balance. So what they collected in the period was enough to pay the bills that came in. Vantec County fell a little bit short, so they're going to increase our premium by three and a half percent. Which is still about half of what the county, the country average is. The country average all across the USA, healthcare costs go up by over six percent a year. And our healthcare cost is only going up by three and a half percent. It's still affordable and it's still great coverage. And Ms. Hill's team calculated for us, the total cost will go up approximately fifty thousand dollars. We pay very close to one and a half million dollars a year to provide the healthcare coverage for our full-time county employees that do not opt out of the coverage. And then county employees have the option to pay for the coverage for spouses and dependents. That part is not affected by what the county is paying. So this renewal packet is some twenty-six, twenty-seven pages long. If you will approve the rate, then I can get started on all the work to complete the renewal package. And there are suspenses all through now until October thirtieth, basically. But if you approve the rate, I can begin the process of walking us through this. And our new insurance will take effect one October of twenty twenty, as it does every year.
And approve of the rate, we still look at options.
Or is this? Uh, we are, we are out of options. We, we have made changes in the past.
Last year, we looked at that, a lot of issues, but.
Yeah, and we're to the point now where we can either retain our grandfather's status. Or if we were to make a change, then we lose our grandfather's status. And grandfathered is basically, uh, pre Affordable Care Act mandates. So healthcare coverage under the Affordable Care Act has about sixty different things that we currently are not required to do. If we drop our grandfather's status, we will then have to complete those sixty things, which is paperwork and making sure all the right things are in place. And you'll hear some people say, well, if you drop your grandfather's status, your plan will actually be cheaper. And the first year, in my non-professional opinion, the first year it will be cheaper. But it will grow substantially each year thereafter because there are costs that we are not currently covering. And if we start to cover those, it will make the cost of our healthcare increase every year, not just the three and a half percent. The TAC hits a switch, but paying for all the traditional things. So I think it's very important that we retain our grandfather's status for as long as possible. At some point, we may lose it. We can't currently charge employees a portion of their healthcare coverage. It's with the new rate, it'll be six hundred and sixty-two dollars and thirty-six cents a month per employee, per month. It's very expensive, but it's still far cheaper than you could get out there on the open marketplace. So as I was saying, if we were to pass a portion of that premium along to the employees, that would force us to lose our grandfather's status. And then down the road we go.
So your recommendation is to approve the three and a half percent. You see the numbers that are included this.
Yes.
Six hundred and sixty-two dollars, thirty-six cents per employee. For the twenty twenty-one budget.
That's correct.
Is there a motion? Okay, that motion by Commissioner Wes, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Pearson, any questions or discussion for Pearson? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider Vantec County participating in this election security assessment program being offered by the Texas Secretary of State. Through the Texas Department of Resources Shared Services Program. Susan, you want to address the court?
This is something we've already done. They just wanted something current and it's where they're going to come in and do this assessment on our security. For the election, it'll be all the machine that'll be down in the election room, make sure everything is secure. And they will also give us information on what we can do that. So we've already done this before. I don't know if you remember, the first time they presented it to us, it was an option. It was a school, and it wasn't an option, it was mandated. We signed off on it, but they were so backed up that they couldn't get in and do all of it. So they wanted something current.
And we'll be secretaries.
Yeah, new signature, but then processing things, that's good. And we'll take it.
Is there a motion to, uh, approve participating in the election security assessment program? That motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Brown, any questions or discussion for Susan? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider replaids of the legacy of the space in prison three.
Yes, sorry, Judge. Judge, this is an existing subdivision, uh, legacy and seven, one four five acres and four lots in there. And it's a repla, total repla and a name change. And there's some considerations, some concerns on the name change. But this subdivision, no lots have been sold in it. The governor's shell owns every lot. And so there won't be any existing lots out there that have been sold. And they hold, for instance, lot number one and legacy, that doesn't exist. So the whole subdivision will change names and repeat sub, and the new lots need our, need all our specifications that they need to be. And so I make a motion to accept this repla.
Okay, there is that motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown, I mean, uh, Melton. Any questions or discussion for Keith? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Will they need to have the.
I've got it.
They should have that.
So here we've got it all from your side.
The item number fifteen, discuss and consider an approved renewal of, of, of a bond for Sandy Hill, Vantec County called.
So good.
Second by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown, any questions, discussion?
There need to be a lot.
Any other discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider the renewal of bond for denture, under the age of five thousand dollars, starting beginning in June of nineteen twenty twenty and ending in June of nineteen twenty twenty-one. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Brown, is there a second? Second, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider releasing the funds for the Texas Association of Counties to reimburse employee or expenses related to training. I guess we, we, what, what we had was an employee that spent his personal money, his own funds, to go and tend to the training. Requested reimbursement for those funds through TAC. And when he sent it, they sent a check to the county, to the, to the. Past the forty-five days that you asked for reimbursement, uh, and they're, they're less than four opportunities. And then that's what, so that's what this is. Dan, with your training, uh, and I talked to Virgil, I probably did do anything wrong too. Here's what I think we need to do. If you have an item for training, I have, the county judge has a lineup for training. And I've heard the same thing, I, rather than, the, the, the training, I ask to take back for the restoration of the place. All the expenses, motel, food and everything, I paid for. And then I, when I get back, I ask TAC to reimburse, they'll, if you go through TAC, they'll reimburse up to six hundred dollars back. And so I ask for reimbursement for them, and they don't give a check. Virgil had a correct point, we have the budget for it. And that was a good point, and I thought, you know what, you're right. What we need to do, you have a lineup of, when you go to training, you can request the restoration. You can pay everybody if you want to, but when you get back, you need to ask for the reimbursement from the county.
Out of your lineup.
Out of your lineup, you need to ask for the reimbursement out of that lineup. That way we can track, track it for budget purposes, rather than having sent straight to you. So my recommendation is that I, and they, we, we ask for reimbursement from the county. When they send that check, they send to the county and then the auditor will put it back into your lineup. And then that way we know.
That's what I'm saying.
That will be the best. But right now, uh, the individual, which is paying and is asking for reimbursement because the COVID nineteen had shut everything down. And then it went over the forty-five days and, and then wanted a check, get it right, get it right for the. So they had to ask, I don't know what the amount is.
It's six hundred and thirty-eight dollars, I believe.
It's six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eleven cents.
And this was, uh, six hundred and thirty-eight that TAC sent us.
Correct.
But they said, yeah, sent to the county.
Sent to the county. Uh, Judge, I make a motion, we, we paid the six hundred and thirty-eight to the board, uh, to reimburse him for his expenses on his training. Since, since TAC is reimbursing us.
Motion, is there a second? We got a second, Bob. Virgil, any questions or discussion?
And then on the other side, on the comment, and we'll discuss it later. But I would assume that the reason they set up like the way you do it is because it teaches the employee, uh, with lack of, lack of both trades, has a little skin in the game. If it's all, if I go down to Austin for training and I know the county's playing hard, but I'm going to send the documents to TAC, reimburse the county. Okay, I might get lazy and not do that. And then all of a sudden, the county's got that money. So if I have to play for it out of my pocket, I'm going to make sure I send that again, so that we get that money from TAC. That's what we're discussing.
Yeah, and you don't have to do that, I, that, that's the procedure if you're spending your money. Uh, the county will still pay for the, if you want to turn in, they'll send, they'll put a check to the motel. You usually get, you usually have an agenda and the meals that you're going to be providing, so you can still do it either way.
Do what you know most of the door for it. Yeah, the logic is to not, just.
And the problem, and the problem could be that an employee goes to train. We ask for an advancement and we pay the motel, we pay the mileage, we pay all that upfront to the employee. And then they go down there and they fill out the paperwork and check, could make the check to themselves instead of the county, and then they get the check. And my office has no way to, I don't know when someone goes to training and TAC is going to reimburse that or not. I don't, I don't know who gets reimbursement to that.
You, you're right, and you have a lineup, you're training, and so that's, you figure out the lineup.
There is a potential liability for, uh, there. I mean, I, I don't suspect that, but I know that it has been a problem in other counties before and they had one that got officially removed because she was doing that, so.
Yeah, that's kind of along those lines. You know, I'm getting the training from TAC. We, we pay TAC a lot of money every year, I, I think it's worth it, but I don't want. Vantec County taxpayer money to cover that training. That's why I didn't ask the county to pay for it, because I knew TAC would pay for it. It's just, you know, we got into a little situation here with the COVID nineteen and it drugged on forever and ever. This training I went to in the first two weeks of February. So it's been a while. But I understand what you're saying and, and that's what I'm going to do in the future. I think it's probably wise so we don't cross any paths.
And Vantec County would be reimbursed. So you, you know, since the taxpayer, we would be paying for it, right, we're reimbursing Vantec County.
And that is one of the few revenues, a check that comes into the county that we do put back into an expense line. If it's a training check, we do allow it to be put back into your expense line.
We have a motion in a second. Any more questions or discussion? Okay, being none, all in favor of reimbursing, Dan, the three hundred, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and eleven cents for his training. Say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion period. Item number eight, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty, budget limits, I don't believe there is any question. Not to be approved, so we'll go, but item number nine. But item number nine, discuss and consider approval of April twenty twenty financial investment report of the county treasurer, the interdiction committee, commissioner's board. So we've got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Brown, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion period. Item number twenty, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government. And approval nature is same in the course of the year, that's matter of record. Commissioner Wes, all over in this, everybody downstairs. Is there a motion to approve the monthly work? A motion by Senator Wes, second by Commissioner Brown, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye, those opposed same sign. Motion period. Is there a motion, Senator? We got a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Commissioner Brown, all in favor say aye. We are all opposed same sign. We are adjourned. Okay. Yeah, I think that would be, I'd say, though, but, uh, I'll do that.
Okay. So, so we don't hear, so we're late.
Okay. Everybody coming in, but there's a good thing, think, though, that someone, they got. Three parts. We go down the. So, Dan, move ahead, Bart, sorry.
And that potential still waiting.
Absolutely, I'm sorry. I wonder what this care is standing for. That care is that? You said coronavirus, coronavirus. It's only three days, but they're four, I mean, four days. Yeah, I said that, but.
What, what, what number was it?
Anything?
I don't. Okay. Just saying, cause.
What number was it?
Coronavirus, they, yeah. Yeah, coronavirus, they, really? No, just, yeah, coronavirus, they, really? What's an EPS? EPS. They get care.
I just say that one of their four initials, that's what it is.
I don't, it's kind of, I, I read it somewhere, it was something. Says we decided, move ahead, coronavirus. Coronavirus, they, really? That's what you do, I mean, that's just.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, because it says cares, but it doesn't say anything next to cares, that was, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I read, I read it, it's, 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 you're, you're in economic security.
Economic, you're, you're.
The coronavirus, they, really, and the economic security, yeah.
That, you see, uh, here, here, yeah.
You see, yeah, I see that. You eat this bag.
Probably, dude.
Probably, let me stand real quick.
We scan this, we scan this. Economic security.
And then you apply for this and then when you actually get the money, you can give this.
I said, like, so I think soon you'll apply for it. You'll be here. I, I. They're going to send you twenty-two cents, right, you got two hundred and forty-five.
Yes.
But this is what we see. Yeah.
You have to pay the property.
You can.
For a dollar.
Yeah.
He puts on a bill.
You know, I hate the city. So, I don't consider it worse. Taxpayer, taxpayer, PAC. They said we, we, we have a lot of money, I don't think it's reimbursed for that, I mean, that's just taxpayer dollars. Yeah. Federal, there's no money you get from taxpayer.
That's right.
No way.
I'll step up there.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you guys. He's hoping to get his face cut, bud.
I'll, I'll work it out.
Yeah. Numbers on the, uh, building. I know we will, but.
We don't have three minutes, so I'm sure.
Whatever. We need to make sure that relationships are there. She doesn't.
Yeah.
You know, they. I'm simply, I said that, I wrote, we don't, I mean, I, 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 I mean, I, I.